All right, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the 4:00 PM work session for our Lynchburg City Council December 10th meeting. First on the agenda, number one is to hear a presentation on the fiscal year 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report from the city's auditors, and I will turn to Ms. Witt.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Norman Yoder and Julie Moore are here with Brown Edwards to make that presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good to be here. Thanks for having us. We think a lot of you all as a client, we think a lot of your staff, we've worked with you for a few years now. I am standing in for Chris Banta and also for Julie and others. Banta was the audit partner, and he is in Saginaw, Michigan. We peer review other firms, and he's up there looking at their government auditing practice as part of that peer review. So what I will do is sort of stand in his place today. I was not part of this audit, but I've talked to the audit team, I've talked to your staff here, and I think I can at least present this CAFR to you at a high level. So when I talk about the CAFR, I'm talking about this document, and I think you all have a copy, and I'll point you to just a few spots in here that we look at every year when we go through a governmental audit with a governing body like yourselves. Before we even open it, though, I will tell you there are good news in here. This is a clean opinion. It's also one of the cleaner audits that we've presented to you. So there's not a lot of excitement here. If you look at the tabs that stick out the side of this document, and you grab the one that says Financial Section, and turn to that one, flip a page, and you will be at Page 1, which is the Independent Auditor's Report. Sure, take your time, that's all right. Okay. So we're on Page 1, which is actually several pages in. Flip to the Financial Section tab, Independent Auditor's Report. It's probably good for you to just let your eyes rest on these two or three pages for a little bit. This reads mostly like it has in previous years. You have a clean opinion. This report manages to take two or three pages to say that, but that's what this does, okay? Following that report is Management's Discussion and Analysis, and I usually just mention that it's there and remind you that it tends to be one of the more accessible parts of this report. You can read it later if you like. If you turn to Page 6, which is Exhibit 1. Page 6, Exhibit 1. You'll have to turn this page sideways, and these numbers get smaller every year, I'm noticing. I don't know how it is for you. But this is a very high-level view of the city of Lynchburg, has these columns, governmental activities, your business-type activities, which include your enterprise funds, water, sewer, and so forth. And then there's a total column about halfway across that page before we get to component units like the schools. Your total assets have crossed $1 billion. That's a lot of dollars in total assets. That counts infrastructure, capital assets, that's where most of those are.
So what you're saying, the numbers were getting smaller, you're referring to the font size?
Only the font size, that they were getting smaller. Thanks for that clarification, yes, yes. And if you stay in that total government column and just go down to total liabilities, you'll see that those total about a little over $600 million. Your largest ones, of course, are ones you already know about, your bonded debt, and then your pension liability and your other post-employment benefit liabilities. Those are both about $97 million right now, so some big numbers there. If you turn the page, and let's say, I thought we would stop just a bit on Page 10. Not going to point out a specific number here, really, but Page 10 is the statement of revenues and expenditures for your governmental funds, especially your general fund is probably the one you spend the most time thinking about, looking at your budget process. This just shows the flow of those funds through the year. This is on the same basis at which you budget, so these numbers probably look familiar to you. Your fund balance in the general fund at the end of the year, about $68 million, that's a strong fund balance relative to your total expenditures of about $180 million, which is just a little higher on the page. I have one other statement I want to stop at on Page 136. Page 136. This is a snapshot of the school operating fund. It's budgeted versus actual results for the year. You'll notice on this statement, you can see a return of funds to the city of about $5 million at the bottom of that statement. And one of the reasons for that is exceptionally good year at the schools in their health insurance, their self-insured for health insurance claims, and a very good year there. There is a footnote, if you want to look at it sometime, and I'm not going to get the page number quite right, but there's a footnote back a little earlier that gives the last couple of years of experience at the schools, as well as the city, for health insurance claims. Now, if you'll go to Page 201. This is an easy place to look at a summary of the whole audit, Page 201. It's called the Schedule of Findings in Question Costs, which sounds ominous, but there's nothing ominous here. This just summarizes the results of several parts of this audit. Number 1, the unmodified opinion on the financial statements as a whole. Number 2, we didn't have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that we identified in the controls at the city or the schools. There are various things of compliance, both state and federal, that we test as part of these audits, and we had no findings there. Page 7 shows the federal programs that we tested as major programs this year. On Number 9, I'm picking different ones here to talk about. Number 9, you'll see that the city was not determined to be a low-risk audity, and I want to explain that in just a second. The rest of this is all vanilla, there's no findings. It talks about the passenger facility charge program out at the airport, no issues there. So why were you not a low-risk audity? If you flip to the next page, Page 203. Last year at the schools, because of a new payroll package, we had a material weakness out there, and that's been rectified since, so this page gives you an update on that. However, for two years after that, you're not considered a low-risk audity, and the only thing that means is that we have to test a larger percentage of your overall federal expenditures, changes that percentage. I just wanted to explain that in case you looked at it later and it kept you up at night and you wondered why it was you were not a low-risk audity. So if there's no findings next year, we had no findings this year, no findings next year that are material weaknesses, you'll flip back to being a low-risk audity. So that's it for this document. There are several others I think you've been given, and I don't plan to go through those. One is a letter about with internal control comments for the schools. The only thing you'll see there are some IT-related ones. They asked to have one of our IT folks come in and spend a little time this year, and we have several suggestions there, but they're not significant findings. This is more like a roadmap of a few things for them to look at. I believe in the city's equivalent letter, the only comment was a couple of disclosure statements, economic interest statements from officials that were not submitted timely, were not filed timely. That was the only comment there. Your other letters are, they read like they have in the past, and there's just not much there. This is a fairly clean audit. If you have questions about anything, I can try to answer them or turn to others in here who can answer them better than I can.
Mr. CFP.
Thank you. Mr. Yoder, always good to see you again, sir, and very much appreciate you taking the time to spend this time with us today. Congratulations to Ms. Witt and your entire staff and the city management team for the clean audit. Congratulations to the LCS for cleaning up the finding that they found in the past, and I hope that that success continues as well, and I hope to be a low-risk audity in the future. I do have a more challenging question for you, Mr. Yoder. I've been recently made aware of an organization that had the same auditor for the past, oh, I don't know, 15 years reviewing their books and successive clean audits passed, and yet they found, I would say, significant deficiencies in their books when they changed bookkeepers. So much there may or may not have been criminal activity. One of the thoughts that this organization has had is that their auditor just became, I guess, didn't really pay as much attention to it, became very comfortable with the process and felt they had it figured out. This would be a much smaller group than Brown Edwards. What is it that Brown Edwards does to make sure that you've got fresh eyes looking, that the tests are being done, and that you're not falling into complacency?
That is a great question. So what you're asking is, can an auditor, over time, become less effective because of the auditor's familiarity with the audity? And how do we prevent that from happening? So maybe I'll first of all say that that's something that's actually received a fair amount of attention over the last 20, 30 years, and there's been debate about whether or not it is a good idea to even require auditor rotation. Most of the groups that have looked at that have concluded that it's not effective to require that an auditor rotate, but that there do need to be things in place to make sure that that complacency doesn't set in. And so that's something we address. We have a lot of municipal clients that we've had for many, many years. Audit quality is something we care a lot about and concerned about. One of the things we do in our governmental practice is we do rotations of partners on engagements like this. That's something that is required for public companies, those that are traded on the stock exchanges with SEC oversight. For those engagements, we have to rotate the engagement partner every five years. What we do in our practice, which has gotten a lot larger, and we're proud of that, but we have a long list of government clients, and every spring, one of the things we look at is who has reviewed or performed which level of review on that job the last three or four years, and then we ensure that we're rotating on all of them. I think that's part of it. There are other things, and I don't want to take too much time, but I'm passionate about the subject because this is something that matters a lot. Other things include just the tone you have within your organization, the expectations that we have of our audit staff, that we're not going out there and just doing the same things we did. We have brainstorming sessions for each job. We talk about where the risks are and what to look for and so forth. So, good question. Those are some of the ways that we combat that, yeah.
I'll just add one more thing, and this is, I guess, more to counsel. And in hearing about some of the discussions after the fact of this incident I'm referring to, the head of the organization was saying that, well, they'd received qualified or quality reports from their subordinates showing that everything was okay. They had a finance committee that was reviewing the information. The finance committee thought everything was okay, and they had an auditor telling them that everything was okay. So where was the check and where was the balance? Why couldn't a problem be identified? And I think that's a challenge, and it just shows how much we depend on an independent audit and a good, hard look at it. And in fact, I recommend it to them that they be contacting your firm in the future.
Appreciate that, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, no further questions?
Thank you all. I want to thank the staff here again one more time for all their good help. You know, this 10 to 15 minutes here is sort of the peak of many, many hours, hundreds of hours of work on both sides, so thanks to them.
Thank you for being here, thank you. Next is our review, amend, and reaffirm the city council's financial management policies, and again, that's Ms. Witt's office.
Thank you. Our financial advisors, if you'll remember, David Rose was here last month, and we talked about taking a look at our fund balance policy and to bring back some language that would help to strengthen those policies. We are planning to meet with rating agencies tomorrow and on the upcoming bond issue that I'll present later tonight. But what you have before you is we're making a recommendation to change the fund balance policy and also the debt management policy, and then to reaffirm the budget and the investment policies. And if you look on Page 2, you'll see the fund balance policy. There's language there in the third bullet underneath Policy 1, that it used to say that we were just going to keep the general fund unassigned fund balance at 10%. And what we have written here with our financial advisors' help is that the city will maintain an unassigned general fund balance equal to a minimum of 10% general fund revenue with a goal of 15% as the city strives to grow incrementally each year, subject to revenues available. And then in the event that we don't make it, that we would get back up to the previous level within three years. And then the last bullet, we've stricken and rewritten to say the city will balance moving towards a 15% targeted fund balance with its annual pay-as-you-go capital improvement requirements. And our goal here was not to put the city in a box that said, "We're going to get to 15%," which is kind of the standard recommendation now to get to 15%, but we didn't want to set that as a specific period of time, because should there be a downturn in the economy or other competing priorities, then we didn't want that to be something that you had to cut a service in order to just put more money aside in a fund balance. So we've written the language here that stresses that our goal is a 15% unassigned fund balance, but it's based on how our revenues are growing and also with, you know, competing priorities The other change is on Page 4, and this is part of the debt management policy, and you'll see Number 5 there has been stricken. This is something that the rating agency used to look at, that was the total tax-supported debt per capita, and that is no longer one of the criteria they look at. It was written very loosely because it said we should be maintained at a reasonable level. Reasonable is kind of hard to define sometimes, so our financial advisors recommended that we just strike that one, that it wasn't important to keep in our policy for now. And those are the only changes in these policies. The rest of the language remains the same. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Witt. And this matter did come to our finance committee this morning, so I'll turn first to Councilmembers Hegelson and Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With this, as we discussed it this morning, it was actually, I think, pretty good use of a committee. You know, lots of times committees, we just kind of, you know, see something, and this one I thought was good from the fact that the finance staff brought forward a recommendation that, quite frankly, at the beginning, I was a little concerned about the lack of, you know, stating a number, as opposed to having a, you know, kind of aspirational or a goal. In talking with the committee, I actually changed my opinion and think that this is good. I appreciate what staff is doing in trying to set aside more in reserves, and as they're doing that, they're shooting for a larger amount to be in reserves. And so the finance committee made a recommendation to approve this. You know, just one little caveat that I thought about after we left, and again, still, nothing against approving it, but that's a fairly large number in between. I know going from 10% to 15%, I think Ms. Witt said that each percent is about $2 million, so we were looking at a $10 million delta, which is fairly big, and so $10 million bucks is 16 cents on a real estate tax rate, and so it's a lot of stuff. So obviously, they're going to do it hopefully incrementally, and we'll have that be presented to us each budget year, but at least it gives a little more of a goal to shoot for, to put aside more, because sometimes things happen and rainy days happen. So the finance committee met and made a recommendation for approval.
Thank you. There is no second. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Wright?
I think Councilmember Hegelson put it well. I think this policy will put us on the right track, so I'm excited to support it.
Thank you. If there is no further discussion, we can all vote now. Thank you. And it passes 7 to 0. Thank you very much. Next is the R1 Single Household Development Discussion, and this is Mr. Martin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. At your direction, staff has prepared background information on single household development. So the purpose of the day's discussion is to discuss with you what is R1 development, discuss the development standards associated with that, look at some historical development data over the years, discuss some of the perceived barriers that go along with single household development, how the city has attempted to address those barriers, and then give council the opportunity for discussion. So the zoning ordinance defines detached dwelling and single-household dwelling. Development associated with single-household development has been described as R1 development, which really evokes a combination of the two definitions, a building containing not more than one dwelling unit surrounded by yards. While the R1 residential development allows single-household dwellings by right, this type of development is actually permitted in all of the city's residential districts, R1 through R4, and some of the city's commercial districts. However, for the purposes of today's discussion, we're going to focus on the RC Conservation District, the R1 Low Density Residential District, and the R2 Low to Medium Density Residential District, because these are the districts which are really the low-density residential areas in the city. And really, for our discussion today, we're only going to really be talking about R1 and R2 because RC just has special characteristics, and there's really not that much land area associated with it. So roughly half of the city's land area is either zoned RC, R1, or R2. The RC Conservation Districts are what's colored green on the map. These are areas that are primarily located along our stream valleys, where our floodplains exist, or other large parcels that have special environmental characteristics or have been placed in conservation easements. The R1 areas are located primarily in the northern area of the city and the southwestern portion. These are the light-yellow areas on the map. And the R2 Low to Medium Density Residential Districts are primarily within the middle of the city here. There are some scatterings throughout and over on the eastern part where Tyriana is located. So if we look at development standards associated with the districts, RC, there is a Conservation District, there is a minimum of a 10-acre lot size to develop a single household detached dwelling in this district. And as such, I can't remember really any houses built on RC-zoned land. The R1 district requires 15,000 minimum lot sizes, and you're looking at densities of up to 2.9 units per acre. The R2 Low to Medium Density is 10,000 square foot, and the density goes up to 4.35 units per acre. And you can see that drawing on the upper right-hand corner of the slide is drawn roughly to scale, so you can see how large RC is, and then it goes to R1, and then the R2 gets slightly smaller.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, Councilmember.
And this is mostly on subject, I guess, but if I'm looking at the map of Tyriana on the previous slide, and think about the slide that you just showed us about the comparison in lot sizes required, there seems to be a disproportionate amount of RC-zoned areas in Tyriana compared to the rest of the city. Does that put a hardship on that area as far as developing?
That is something that we can definitely look at as far as the Tyriana plan. If I'm looking at that correctly, I believe some of that land area may be where the city had looked at extending a landfill. I'd have to look in that in greater detail, but that's definitely a good point, yes.
I think, you know, for the future, I think you should look at that. If you want to make sure that area is accessible to people, then...
And there are other issues associated with Tyriana, like...
Like sewer.
Yes, sewer primarily.
Yes. Thank you, sorry for the digression there.
No, very good. So going further in terms of development standards, what does it take to actually subdivide a piece of property and to build a house? The zoning ordinance requires a dedicated street to extend across the entire property frontage of any new lot. The zoning ordinance requires at least 50 feet of right-of-way and 20 feet of pavement width. So if you're going to subdivide a property, it has to be on a city street, is what that's saying. So for subdivisions of five lots or more, the city's subdivision ordinance requires connections to public sanitary sewer and public water, where the public water and sewer is accessible. Now accessibility is defined as the number of lots at the ratio of 100 feet. For an example, a five-lot subdivision would be considered accessible if there was public water and sewer within 500 feet of the property boundary. So if you have water and sewer that close to the boundary, you are required to connect to city water and sewer. However, subdivisions of five lots or less can be served by private well or septic, provided that there are no new roads required to access it, so it would be subdivided off of an existing city street. The lot sizes have to be increased, up to 25,000 square feet for private water and sewer, and water and sewer are not available. So I think you will see a trend here. If water and sewer are available based on that ratio, it is required to connect to those. And that's something really different from the city and the counties where you can do well and septic. But that is a perfectly rational thing to have in a city, is to encourage connection to the municipal water and sewer services.
Again, the reason that's a rational thing to do is because it becomes a public health issue because of failing septic tanks, like as can be seen in the future of Richmond Hills most likely, because soils degrade over time around drain fields. So in order to keep, you're basically raw or untreated septage from bubbling up, you need to have, I mean, you need to take it away. So I think that's a perfect... So I think that's a perfectly reasonable requirement from a public safety and health and secure, public safety and security and health perspective.
Absolutely, yeah. So subdivisions of six lots or more on private well or septic can be approved by city council if the lots are at least one acre. Again, public water and sewer are not available. The lots must retain efficient area for drain fields, and then also easements are provided for the future extension of public water and sewer. So the extension of public water and sewer is a big piece of how single households or actually any development occurs within the city. So the subdivision ordinance also requires that for any new residential street, curb, gutter, and sidewalk have to be installed per the city's manual specifications. Sidewalks have to be installed on at least one side of any residential street, and on both sides, if vehicle trips exceed 6,000 per day, which that's a lot of trips, so you'll probably never see sidewalks on two sides of residential street. And also, street trees are required. The city manual of specifications...
You know, the curb and gutter required, what is the city manual of specifications?
That is a engineering standard that's adopted by engineering that says these are our minimum standards.
So those could change, of course.
Yes, absolutely. But I will say, and your engineering staff is much better to talk with about this, the city receives maintenance dollars based on how we construct our streets, and a lot of those are VDOT standards. So if we want to get the maintenance money, we have to build it to a certain standard.
Or a small subdivision that probably...
It could. It's just a, a matter of wanting to get the maintenance money.
Like a major VDOT roads or main arterials, I'm sure that would make sense.
Well, it applies to the, any city street. We still get the maintenance dollars.
That's right. So all the secondary roads in the street system, we receive maintenance funds, and now it's for paving and also for snow plowing and everything else we do to maintain the roads. So in order to get those funds, they have to meet VDOT standards.
And so if those standards, those engineering standards, as you just made some comparisons with some of the, or going to, and some of those in the counties that don't have that...
Yes, so counties are different. They, the streets are maintained typically by VDOT.
By VDOT.
And I can't speak as intelligently about that anymore, but the, the standards are what they are, and we certainly are above them, but we think that leads to a better community.
So we get more money because of that, or no, same amount?
But that is absolutely a discussion that you may want to have, or, or we should have with the Engineering Division about what are the actual standards that are required versus what may reduce costs a little bit. So this is just an example of the discrepancy in what's required by the zoning ordinance on the, on the bottom. That is, that Parkland, and then on top, the Preserve. That street on the bottom was constructed circa 1950, and then the Preserve at Oakwood was constructed around 2010. Same amount of right-of-way, but you can see the much wider pavement widths that...
So what's the difference of that?
Why is that? What happened there?
Well, still 50-foot of right-of-way, but you can see that on the bottom, as required by the zoning ordinance, you've got 21 feet of pavement. I believe there's just curb, and then on the top, you've got 31-foot of pavement back. You've got a wider street per the manual specifications.
So that could change again?
It could. Obviously, wider streets are more expensive. So kind of looking at the data, we looked at the past five years. The, the number of single household detached structures built within the city of Lynchburg in the past five years has remained fairly constant. Forty-seven in 2015, we're at, right at 48 that have been constructed this year. These numbers only include the single household detached structures that were built in the R1 and R2 districts. If we looked at the single household detached structures that were built in the R3 or R4 districts, the numbers would be higher. Yet we, for the purpose of our discussion today, we really tried to focus on the lower-density areas of, of the city. It's also important to note that when we look at these numbers and compare them to the surrounding localities, the city is much smaller than the surrounding counties. The city is roughly 23,340 acres compared to Campbell County, which is 200, over 277, 979 acres. Amherst is 307,000, and Bedford is 313,289. So the city of Lynchburg is much smaller than its surrounding neighbors, and that being said, I think the number of single household detached structures compared with other localities is very proportional, or we're actually capturing a, a good share of, of that. Yes, sir.
So Martin, can we assume that the homes that haven't been there are...
Pretty much occupied once complete? Is that fair?
I would think that's a safe assumption.
They're not just saying, you know, empty stock or anything?
No.
Councilmember Herr.
These are probably single building permits. These are not part of a subdivision, most likely.
No, the, some of these would be part of subdivisions.
Okay.
So I think the other, I won't say that council's at a disadvantage, but you don't typically, we don't have to bring subdivisions to council. So it's a purely ministerial process. We, we review at a staff level, and as long as they meet the code, they, they go on their way, which is a good thing.
By right is what we prefer.
Right. It's a good thing. So I think it's good for you to periodically see what's happening in, in the city. So this, this slide also shows where the vacant remaining R1 and R2 land is within the city. That's roughly 3,051 acres. This is land that has a improvement value of less than $6,000 on it. So if it had an improvement value of less than $6,000, we considered it vacant. What this map does not show is large tracts of land that might have one house on it that could be subdivided further. Or, yeah, that, that's basically what it doesn't show. It doesn't show large tracts of lands with, with one single house on it. So there may be more land out there that could be subdivided, but that would take a much greater detailed look at to try and determine if it actually could be subdivided, and it would also be making a judgment call based on what the current owner would want So again, when considering the much smaller land area of the city compared to that of the surrounding counties, staff believes that the number of single detached structures being built is proportional, yet there are perceived barriers to this type of construction. Land cost in the city is, could be considered relatively high. The city assessor's data indicates that vacant raw residential land is selling for right around 23,000, right around $24,000 an acre. Then when you look at the infrastructure cost based on the city's annual contract, you're looking at about $511 per foot to construct a new road, new residential street in, in the city of Lynchburg. So for one R1, 15,000 square foot, square foot lot with 100 feet of frontage, you're looking at $33,832 of cost incurred before any grading occurs. That does not include storm sewer, stormwater management, and that also does not include the, the design cost for the road, water, and sewer. So there are costs associated with building these new residential streets, and they are a little bit higher than what is occurring in, in the, the counties. You're roughly looking at somewhere around 300, the $350 a foot in the counties compared to in, in the city.
So I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. $511 per foot, so $51,100 per 100 feet of frontage.
I'll trust your math, but yes.
Yeah, yeah. Or you can say, yes. And on top of that...
You've got the land.
Thirty-three thousand for the land.
Well, 23, 20, 23,980 for the land.
Per acre, but for 15,000 square feet with 100 feet of road frontage, so is that 33 for the land itself?
That's right. So it would come down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Say that again?
Well, if it's 23,000, you're right. If it's 23,980 per acre, then actually that would be a third of the, of the 23,980 for 15,000 square foot lot, right? Because that's about a third of an acre.
About a third of an acre.
So that's a good catch.
All right. But then, but then the road's got, I'm trying to think from a developer's standpoint. It's going to cost $51,000 to do 100 feet of road. I'm, I'm going to have two sides of the roads. That gives me two, two lots on either side, so each lot should be able to split the cost of the road. So what does that give me for total, for total lot cost? Land plus improvements. So it's $25,000 for the, round number is $25,000 for the improvements, the, the curb and gutter road, sidewalk, water, sewer, street trees. And then whatever the math is for the, for the lot.
Well, I think if, if we looked at it kind of very roughly, if you had one parcel and you put the street down the middle, it was one acre, and you put a lot on one side and a lot on the other, and you take out the right-of-way, you're probably right at the 33,832, maybe a little bit less, because you'd have to have 100 feet on both lots.
Okay, yeah. And then the assessment is 24 per acre? Okay, great. I wonder if we looked in the, I'm just trying to figure out what that actual stands up to, to actual assess, assess value. So for, I'm trying to put it in terms that I can understand, such as my house is, I'm wondering what the land assessed for my house is compared to what the investment is to put it in. And my gut tells me that the, that the assessed value is probably lower than the investment cost to get it in place.
I see where you're going. That's something we could kind of talk to Mr. Bandit about.
All right. So the reason I'm asking that, so a developer's trying to develop a, a piece of property in R1, and I'm, we ask the question because there's, there seems to be limited R1 development. What Mr. Martin told us so is there is R1 development, we're just not seeing it come in front of us. And what I've heard from developers is that the cost, the cost, what they sell the lot for has to be, has to make up for the improvements, because the house is, there's, yes, the house, they, they'll sell the lots and then somebody's going to build a house on the lot. So they've got to buy the land and then sell each lot for the amount of the raw cost of the land plus the improved cost of, of the road, and that's where it gets cost prohibitive. That's what I'm hearing.
Well, and, and to a degree, that's absolutely right, but let's talk about what the city has done and continues to do to try and address some of these perceived barriers.
Yeah, please.
But just to go on, some perceived and real barriers that are, are out there is obviously the topography of the city's land. Some of the land that's available is, is just too steep to be built upon. Land has floodplains where you cannot build structures within it. Some of the land is landlocked, so there's no physical way to access the property without going through someone else. So unless you can assemble that land or, or get the right-of-way into it, there's no way to develop it. You have the stormwater management issues, that's a pretty even keel between all localities. You have the land availability that we spoke about, and then you also have the market conditions about what the market will support. And obviously, council has been seeing a lot of apartment and townhome developments, and that's just based on what the market is, is doing at, at the time. So how has the city been trying to address these, these perceived and real barriers? You know, the, the cities, the city pays 100% of costs for extending public water and sewer to the subdivision boundary based upon economic feasibility. And that feasibility ratio is again, 100 feet of extension per lot. Past councils, not unlike yourself, have, have expressed their concern with the perception that the city's not seeing single household development. This is really not the first time I've heard this discussion. It's the first time I've been fortunate enough to have it with you, but councils have talked about this in the past. Since 1989, there have been these things put in the ordinance to try and offset some of those higher costs of developing in the city. One of those is paying for the extension of the water and sewer to the property boundary. So if the water and sewer lines, public infrastructure is within that, that, that ratio there, Water Resources pays 100% of getting it to the property boundary. Then after that, it is the responsibility of the developer to extend it within the subdivision. So that, that is one thing that, that the city has done and continues to do. The city also cost shares the installation of the curb, gutter, and sidewalk at the rate of 50/50. The city will reimburse the cost of installing those items up to 50% of the annual contract.
We struck that, though, but that must have been only for...
Only for commercial.
Only commercial.
This is, this is codified in your subdivision ordinance.
I remember, I was just...
And has been so for at least 89.
The 50/50 has, but when you updated the subdivision, we stopped doing it for commercial.
No, sir. Oh, well, the commercial was never in the subdivision ordinance. You, you stopped that at a Physical Development Committee meeting one morning, but that was more of a policy decision. This is, this is codified, codified, yes. The subdivision ordinance allows also for flag lots with at least 50-foot of frontage. So say you have a very large parcel that only has 100 feet of frontage, or, or, yeah, only 150 feet of frontage, and you want to subdivide that, and you couldn't meet the street frontage requirements, the subdivision ordinance allows you to do two flag lots, that's with the long poles, in order to, to subdivide it and encourage development. Some things that we've done in the zoning ordinance, so lots existing prior to July 11th of 2011 may provide access on streets that only extend a minimum of 25 feet past the driveway entrance. So if you've got a existing residential lot on a paper street where it has not been extended, the code was changed in 2011 to say, okay, instead of having to extend the street all the way across the frontage of the lot, you only have to extend it 25 feet past your driveway. And that was done in an attempt to try and encourage infill and reduce the cost of extending the, the infrastructure. Also, lots existing prior to September of 89, if there was an existing unobstructed easement to that lot, you could build one single-family home on it. That's been existing since 89. Some of the key things that we see as improving and encouraging more single household development are the things that we did in February 2016 with the rewrite of the zoning ordinance. The first being allowing a reduction in setbacks in, in lot sizes to encourage infill development. You may remember the discussion of neighborhood norms. So instead of trying to apply sets, set standards to an existing neighborhood, this section looks at the existing houses in the area, takes a, an average or median of, of those setbacks and allows infill development to occur based on that. And what we saw before we had this is lots that would either have to go and try and obtain variances, or just could not have been built upon. One of the things that, that we're actually pretty excited about and is actually gaining more interest from developers is this residential cluster subdivision. This was put in in 2016, and it allows up to a 50% reduction in the required lot size and setbacks, and still allows... the required lot size and setbacks, and still allows the, the density that's permitted in the underlying zoning district. This was done in order to reduce infrastructure costs, shorter water and sewer, road construction, and, and actually it's starting to get more interest from developers. And got permission, we had a pre-TRC Technical Review Committee meeting with the developer, and this is a thirty-one acre tract, actually off of Fleetwood Drive, that zoned R1. This is the typical layout that they would submit, and based on the way the lot size is and the, the lot lines exist, they would only be able to get the forty-three lots, even though the density in the underlying R1 would permit eighty-nine units. And this is what they are looking to do, which is seventy-one lots with thirty percent of open spaces. And I asked the developer quite pointedly, I said, would you be doing this development without this residential cluster? And his answer was no, because of the lot cost. It's really, it's really a combination of land cost and infrastructure cost, but what we're seeing more and more is the cost of the land is what's driving some of this.
Is this part of the plan you development? I mean, how's that different where they, where you can allow for that flexibility similarly?
The plan you development allows for a mixture of housing types, so they could come in and not only do single detached, they could do duplexes or townhomes. Similar, but this allows only the detached housing and also has the requirement for the open space.
So these on your, like, twenty-nine to sixty, those are, they look like they're pretty, it's on the side.
They, they would be fifty percent of the lot size, which is, R1 requires fifteen thousand, these would be roughly seventy-five hundred. But the provision of the ordinance is that where these, where the subdivision would touch existing lots, they have to be at least eighty percent. So they're much larger where they touch existing residential developments to try and create So, in closing, the city's population was estimated to be eighty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-six in twenty eighteen. This is up from seventy-five thousand six hundred and fifty-eight in twenty-ten, so an increase of over sixty-five hundred residents in the city. When you look at Campbell County, their population only increased by a hundred and thirty-one people, Amherst actually declined six hundred and eighty-eight people, and Bedford increased by four thousand people. So the, the city is one of the fastest-growing localities in this region. And the city, city's comprehensive plan recognizes that the city's boundaries in terms of land area are not going to increase in the foreseeable future. And in order for growth to occur, the city must look to do infill development, redevelopment, or development at greater densities where it can be compatibly integrated with existing neighborhoods. So we, we have talked to council about density and how that is really gonna, that's really the only way the city can grow in the foreseeable future, is to become more dense. And with that, we'll open it up to discussion and have, answer any questions that you may have.
Number Wilder?
Yes, thank you for the presentation, I really appreciate that. It's one of those areas that I've had a lot of questions about, so you've answered a lot of them. One question is that, once, when we talk to developers, have you considered some of the conversations that they had, or some of the challenges that they've had, have you addressed some of those challenges from developers when they come to you for the, for the city, for division?
Well, when they come to us, we always talk to them about what we can offer them in, in terms of the, the water, water and sewer extensions, we, we talk to them about the cost share on the curb and gutter. Yet, we've also been talking with them about the residential cluster subdivision, and that is one thing that I believe is going to encourage more single-household development, is these types of divisions. Because developers, I've said it before, developers are not necessarily, necessarily bad people, they're not bad people, they're in business to make money, right? And they have to do it at a price point, and in order to meet that, they have to get their densities up. And, and when you have a land, a piece of land that's not laid out to, that's conducive to get the amount of units that's allowed by the zoning ordinance, they get fewer lots, but the land values are still costing the same.
And i- is there a better way to market this to developers? I don't know if it's just by word of mouth, or when they come in, do the presentation or something like that, but is there a better presentation we can do as a city to make sure the developers are aware of all the options that are for them?
I, I think obviously we could maybe do a better job about how we talk about the residential cluster and things that, that we have to offer, either through our website or maybe working with economic development to do that, so, yes.
I'm, I'm just glad to hear we have, we do have some opportunities for developers and to make some concessions, so I'm glad to hear that, so make sure that they are aware of it, and anything we can do to help promote that more to the business developers in our community. Thank you, appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
I'm gonna show my ignorance now. What is infill development?
Oh, let's say you have a house on this side and a house on this side and a vacant lot in the middle, getting someone to build a house on that vacant lot.
Thank you. And that might follow my question, so if the residential cluster subdivision, we already offer like a fifty, I thought I heard a fifty percent reduction in the cost because of that. So for that person who's coming in and says, I want to infill this lot, and then this lot over here, and then this lot over here, it's not a, an acreage, it's lots. Do we, how, what's the benefit of them doing that? Where, do we offer any?
So the, the residential cluster allows a fifty percent reduction in lot size.
Okay.
And that in turns allows, theoretically, it allows them to do shorter street extensions, shorter water and sewer line extensions, which is cheaper and gets the same amount of, of lots.
Right.
That would be for a new subdivision. That does not apply to infill development, say in our old, older residential neighborhoods, unless they had a very large lot.
And that's probably, that's the, I had a developer who asked me, they were doing one or two lots in the older neighborhoods, and so they had suggestions of what would have helped them make a better price point for themselves, and maybe it goes back to some of Councilmember Perro's conversation, how do we make infill development more, incentivize it more, or what are some options that are there?
And we, and we definitely attempted to do that with the updates to the zoning ordinance. We would love to listen to other suggestions, so if you would put them in contact with me, I'd love to speak with them about their ideas.
Okay.
Yep.
Councilmember Hugelson?
Adding on that, I think some of the, the items that Mr. Martin mentioned was if you have raw land that doesn't have sidewalks, curb and gutter, roads, water and sewer, that is where the city will partner, fifty-fifty in some cases, to extend that. But when it's a house, when it's a vacant lot, that normally probably has the sewer, the, the road and the sewer and the curb and gutter already on there, so it's basically somebody building a house on a vacant lot. So I don't think they have those, those ancillary...
That's absolutely correct, yeah.
Well, they should specifically like a... And it might be me, a six thousand water hookup?
Yeah, it may be, that's, that's the conversation.
And part of the hookup is a little different, that's, I guess, with the sewer, because you gotta buy in to the, all the fixed costs of what has been invested already in the, in the entire sewer system.
Right. Okay, so they, okay, that was one specific cost they mentioned, but again, they are doing, they have done some development on those single lots like that, so it didn't stop them, I, I don't know if it discouraged them from future, but they did do it. So that's why I'm asking, have we thought about other ways to incentivize the infill?
Have you considered talking about that?
No, we haven't, but...
We certainly could consider it.
Oh, Councilmember Perro?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Mayor. If, if you're done.
Oh, yeah.
Um, yeah, this, in, in, in going through the presentation, something occurred to me, and especially that shot of Parkland Drive versus newly-developed street. It occurred to me that this council has supported Mr. White's position of being on a road diet, especially in the downtown area. So this council supported changing downtown to two-way and effectively narrowing the streets to slow down traffic. I think that a wide street does incentivize people to go faster, I think we've all talked about that. So I lived on Willa Lawn Drive for a long time, which is a newer subdivision in an eighties sort of sense, but it's got a wide street, and people fly down, down Willa Lawn. I moved one street over to Madden Drive, which has a narrow street, people crawl down Madden Drive. I think maybe we ought to take a look at our standards, I know that it, I know VDOT's gonna have a say in this, but take a look at our standards and see if we can get, get on a road diet in our residential subdivisions for, to just slow traffic down and make it more conducive to a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood.
You're absolutely correct, I wasn't gonna open planning school today, but you're right, those streets do encourage speeding and, and other issues. I think the photo speaks for itself, it really does.
I take this, this from, I take the road diet and new, not existing, not, not taking existing and spending a bunch of money and getting rid of half of that road that cars go down either. So I think of the road diet on prospective, future, you know, for not, not reactionary to the previous, so. Speaking of, yeah.
And just one more question, do we have designated, looking at our land maps, areas that are prime residential cluster potential? Do we market like that, or do we just let developers find what they find and...
Our future land use map shows areas that the city would like to see developed, not really as residential clusters, but as low-density development. Oftentimes, a developer will come in and, and ask us to help find tracks for them, which we do from, from time to time. You know, it's kind of what we do, is we, we help people, not just on residential, but commercial tracks also, so, yep.
Councilmember Wilder?
And for economic development to work together with your department as far as having a session for developers, letting them know which tracks there are available, and also what accommodations that the city does give to developers, just again, an informational session, just so the developers can be more aware. And also, again, again, as, as, as I've mentioned on City Council, the time I've been here, it's obviously many apartment complex developments, you know? And again, that's, we're not doing houses, but again, just to encourage that more so, because a lot of them are looking for single-family residences, and maybe developers could be aware of all the developments, the tracks that are out here, and the different subdivision clusters that you, that they do have available to them, and what concessions are made, just to make sure they are, be more publicity aware of what's going on in Lynchburg community.
Sure, we, we've had some developer, developer forums in the past, it's been a while, but I think we, probably high time we do one again.
Any further questions for Mr. Martin? Oh, Councilmember Wright?
I just missed it, but I suppose it's, I'm floating this idea without having sort of fully thought it through, which is probably a mistake, but I'll say it anyway, which is, is it possible that council's in many ways disincentivizing people from developing R1 because we are approving so many, so many apartment complexes? You know, would demand be higher for, for these developments if you didn't have so many, you know, hundreds of units a year being built in high-density developments?
Well, again, I think proportionately Lynchburg is capturing its fair share of the single-household detached market.
Relative to the counties.
Relatively, if you look at what's occurring in the surrounding localities, we're, we're building single detached houses.
Right.
I think we have to look at, we still have to talk about what the highest and best use of the, the property is. And the discussion I didn't want to get in today, but council may want to look at at some point, is whether single-household detachment actually pays for itself. And that might be, that's a difficult conversation to have, but it's true.
Typically, it does not.
Correct.
Hmm, fascinating. Thank you.
It's about the economics.
I won't push the conversation for now.
Right.
It's interesting.
Well, okay, and so if that's the case, then definitely apartments wouldn't.
I mean, I just caught the tail end of it, but if you said that single-family households do not pay for itself, there's no way a townhome full of school-aged children utilizing public services in schools could even remotely pay for itself. So, so if that doesn't pay for itself, let's not magnify it by having something bigger even pay for it less, because you can't make it up on the quantity, you know? If you have ten acres and ten houses versus ten acres and a thousand apartments, I mean, you don't make it up on volume apparently if it doesn't pay for itself, so.
Yeah, I, I don't have the data in front of me, and I think we're both talking in general terms. I, I think what we're referring to is assessed value of one compared to assessed value of another. It, it's a big discussion, and that's why I really didn't want to bring it up this afternoon. I really wanted to give you an overview of what R1 development is, and just to get you to understand that R1 development is really single-household detached dwellings that can occur in multiple districts.
And with it, I think, you know, how great that is for the community, quite frankly. I mean, lots of us live in single-family neighborhoods, which I think it's good, I mean, because you have, you have people that take root, there, there's not a lot of transients, you have the same neighbors, they kind of look out for each other, you have that collegial neighborhood. I thi- I think it's very beneficial for our community when we protect neighborhoods, and especially single-family neighborhoods. You, you see a lot of, of the growth that happens outside of the city where there's less density, you know? And so, because people like a little elbow room, you know, I think it's good for communities to have elbow room, and the more that we put in more densely populated areas, less elbow room, but, but also the more that we make approvals and, and new changes to, like if it's an R1 zone and now we change it to an R3 or R4, that doesn't help economically because you have now a hu, a lot more of a supply with the same demand. So we can help increase prices by not continuously approving new changes and rezoning, because it allows for more supply with the same kind of corresponding demand. If you have a hu, a bigger, a less of a supply, same demand, prices go up. Prices go up, we have, you know, benefits for the city, the taxpayers and, or the tax base, and, so.
Yeah, I don't disagree with anything you said about the importance of neighborhoods, yet the fact remains, the city has fifty square miles, and it has an increasing population and a limited availability of R1 and R2 land. The population is not gonna continue to increase, at some point, you're gonna use all your land and that's it. You're not gonna grow anymore, because we can't annex. So we've said it, we've said it at least since two thousand, if the city wants to continue to grow in population, it's gonna have to become more dense.
Well, and so, so then it argues what's, what's important part of having, growing in population?
Well, retail follows rooftop.
I mean, lots of people come from other places and, and actually shop here.
Right.
You know, lots of people have, you know, I think we've had some changes with regarding purchasing, you know, through technology, lots of people buy stuff without going to your local retail store.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the right or wrong answer is, I think this is good discussion for, for us to have periodically on, on how the city's gonna grow in, in the next few years.
And I think the more we're improving things like our quality of life, which are trails, our parks and recreation, our amenities, our opportunities, like that, we're gonna see people who want to benefit from that. And so that's why I asked about the infill, because if that's our, our traction maybe there, how do we encourage that, seemingly, given what you just mentioned, so.
All right, any further discussion or thoughts? All right, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, I appreciate you letting me talk to you.
Yes, thank you very much. Next is City Council Compensation. Turn to Ms. Verchek, thank you. Turn to Ms. Verchek, thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, it has been staff's practice to bring to you every two years prior to a council election, an opportunity to review your compensation to determine if you want to change either your salary or benefits and to receive budget guidance as we prepare the FY 2021 proposed budget. State code states that no increase in salary shall take effect until July 1 after the next regularly scheduled election of council members. Code also states that any proposed increase in the salary of members be adopted at least four months prior to the next election. This evening's meeting is that date that is four months prior to the election. For our population category of 75,000 to 174,999, the salary for the mayor shall not exceed $25,000 and $23,000 for council members. Currently, the mayor is paid $12,000 a year and $10,000 a year for council members. Council salaries have not changed since July 1, 2008. Currently, council is not eligible for any benefits. Council may also want to consider adding fringe benefits such as group life, medical, dental, vision, insurance, retirement, or disability. I provided a comparative chart of other mayor council salaries throughout the Commonwealth that was nicely prepared by the clerk of council. Thank you, Robin. Council salaries are set forth in city code accordingly. A change to salaries would require a code amendment. A draft ordinance with blanks to fill in with new salaries is provided should council so choose, and a resolution providing the members of council with benefits is also attached if council so chooses to add benefits to your compensation. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Verchek. Any discussion regarding this item?
Well, I'll start the discussion. I think that, I said it the last time, if you want a diverse group of people, if you want more folks interested, I think you have to pay people more. And so I've been on this council for six years, and I think unless you, the reality is unless you are a professional with your own flexibility and schedule, or you have an employer who's very flexible because they feel the value of your work as a council member and a public servant is important, then you're fine. And, but to offer, to provide more opportunities to people who have a lot of great leadership skills and want to serve their community, they have to be able to help support their families and take care of them. And so that's just my two cents. You know, for a city our size that's growing, it requires a lot of all of the council members. And I really don't think the public understands the amount of time that a lot of council members spend over the years. Someone like Councilmember Hegelson, who's been here 14 years, Councilmember Nelson and others, Councilmember Perrow. I just think that as a body, for the city, and as leadership of the region, and for the work we do and the decisions and the ongoing time commitment, I think discussion is warranted. So that's why I'm a person that supports increase or benefits or something. I realized last time we had that vote, I think, and it did not pass, but I just think for all the work we do that it is worth more than the $10,000 or $12,000 a year that people do it. You love public service, but you have to survive too. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mayor, for the conversation. Again, as you stated, I think the challenge is because of the hours that's required for a city council is numerous, and you have to have a flexible job. I'm just inclined to do that. And luckily, I'm in a position where I do have a somewhat flexible job. I've been gladdied concessions, particularly by being a single parent, but again, it does require a lot of extra time, especially this weekend with all the, I've spent most of my time this weekend reading, and I still did not finish all of my packages between the 50,000 emails that we got about Second Amendment. So between the emails and all the other things, I have not, I did not get a chance to finish everything, you know. And I was working all weekend in the midst of life. So it does require a lot of time. And I was looking at maybe like even Charlottesville, which is much half the size of Lynchburg, and they obviously like twice as much as we are in Lynchburg. So I was looking at something that they tried, I think the last time, only two of us approved it with myself, I think Councilman Hegelson, I think, encouraged an increase. Most of us probably already have benefits on our jobs or in our own personal lives. So I would be inclined to more at least raising it to more so what Charlottesville is, or at least something close to that, if we were to do any kind of increase whatsoever.
Any other discussion or persons? Vice Mayor Dolan.
You probably don't want to hear what I have to say. But, you know, I have sort of a conflict here, and it's, I just, I would have a problem in good conscience when I know that we have city employees that are working two and three jobs just to make ends meet. And I'm in a little different situation, I guess, because I'm retired and I have all kinds of time and I can do whatever I want to do, so I, and I'm very sensitive to that. But I would hate to think that anybody would sit in this chair for the money. I just think that that would be the wrong reason to, as a public servant, I mean, it's what we do for, so anyway, I would, I have a little problem with it, but it's more of a conscience-level thing here.
And I think we all have a commitment to our community. I know we also served on the school board for nine, about nine years where there's no compensation for that. So again, we all are committed to that, but again, even some of us has to work more than what, I have to work this job and others. So I have to work not even this job, I got to work regular jobs and another job just so I can make it. So again, it's just something we have to do in life. So I understand our citizens have to work several different jobs. I'm compassionate for that as well. I'm just, I do understand that as well, but.
I think, Councilmember Perrow.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. And Ms. Verchek, you're going to have to help me with the history and the timeframe here. When is it, was it 2009, maybe 10 or 11, when actually council reduced its salary because of budget cuts across, across the board everywhere? So council decided that because everybody else was taking a hit, we should take a hit too. Now granted, it didn't mean a whole lot on the city budget, but it was symbolic.
So it was, I'm sorry?
What do you think? '09? Okay.
You increased your salaries July 1 of '08, which was fiscal year 2009.
But I remember we cut it back.
I think it may have been before that that you decreased.
Well, I came on board in '08, and I remember voting for the reduction because it was during the Great Recession that it happened, and we had the authorization. It wasn't a change in the, in the code, it was we didn't fully fund the council staff and the, the council salaries in the budget. And then maybe in, it was probably in '12 or '13, that the city manager at the time said, "I've, I'm filling your budget this time because you all work hard." I don't believe, and during that time, we also made another change, because the point that you made is exactly the point that others made on, on council, that it was inaccessible to people that needed to have jobs. So that's why we changed the work schedule plan. It used to be that the second, whatever it was, the second Tuesday of the month was the work session Tuesday. It began at 2, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, and it ran till, what, 5 or 6, I think? You remember Councilmember Hegelson? It ran, it ran long. And what we suggested on doing was to make it more accessible, that we split that work session up. Oh, and we had a regular council meeting after that too, I think, but.
At 5:00.
At 5:00, yep, that's right.
It was an early in the late, that's right.
And then to, to split that work session up, we agreed that we'd have a work session before every meeting and that we'd start at 4:00. And that way, it gave us the same amount of time in work session, but it, it made it more accessible to people to attend. I've never seen this job, this to be a job. I've seen it to be a calling. I'm embarrassed sometimes when people ask, you know, they said, "Do you even get, they even, do you even get paid for that?" And I say, "Well, yeah, we do get, do get paid a little bit." I feel like this is something that we should be doing, and, and I don't, I think it'd be wrong for it to be considered a job, because if it is a job, then maybe I should have an office. Maybe I should be down here all the time. And, you know, personally, I don't think the manager would want me down here all the time. You know, the mayor's different. The mayor has to have an office to receive guests and so forth. But, and that's why the mayor gets paid a little bit more also, and to be the, you know, to serve as the spokesperson for the city. But I don't, this is not something that I would endorse changing. I think it's, it's really, it's a, you have to do it because you love the work, not, and not because, yeah, it's a, it's a supplemental source of income.
I thought I saw, oh, Councilmember Wright.
I add this only because, I'll be honest, I'm not entirely sure how I feel about this. It's been very, it's been interesting to hear the conversation. I just did some, some quick math, and assuming the $10,000, and let's say you put in 15 hours of work per week, which actually isn't, it's not unusual, that comes to 1282 per hour. And then if you not, you know, that's before taxes. And then if, if it's up to 20 hours, well, again, which is not unusual, it's 961 per hour that, that council is compensated. And there's like a practical concern, which is, you know, a lot of us spend our time in our cars, driving around the community, going to events, there's gas and there's maintenance of the car and so forth and so on. So these expenses are defrayed somewhat by the compensation we receive. And then I would, I would echo the mayor's point about the question of diversity. You know, it's a, it's a privilege to serve here, but it also requires privilege to serve here, I think, in a lot of respects. And if we do want to make this body accessible to more members of the community, I think it has to be more than just the schedule of work, which in itself still is somewhat prohibitive for a lot of folks who can't leave work before 5:00. But I think that the compensation, not that, not that you're going to, you're never going to make a living off of this, but we, we could take, take steps to make it more equitable so that more folks can, can shoot for it and actually make it a reality for them. I'm not sure what the proper amount is in that case, and so I'd be curious for that discussion, but, I don't know, this has got me thinking.
All right, thank you. Any further thoughts? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do think, I do agree with everything that's been said in terms of incentivizing greater diversity of participation of persons who can. I think Councilmembers, Perrow makes some very good points in calculating the amount of time I put in each week, it's probably around 25 hours. So maybe I'm just a slow learner or something, I don't know. But we don't, we don't do it because of the compensation. However, from my perspective, those of you who know me, I would not vote for a benefit that would come to me in any time within my term. And since I'm not up for election until two and a half years, if I vote, well, I'm not going to vote for a decrease, let me say that first of all. I don't think anybody should be, have their salary detracted, but since I'm not up for election in May, I would vote against any decision to increase it because it would benefit me after July 1st.
All right. Well, thank you, and I'm not going to ask for any motion to be made, because I don't think we have enough votes to do that. But I want to make that known, that there is a lot of time spent. The mayor spends a lot being accessible to multiple areas and people and groups. And so I won't be mayor forever, or a council member forever, but just thinking in the future, I've served six years, like I said, others have served more, but it is inaccessible. And Councilmember Wright makes that point there about it's a privilege, or you have to have the privilege to serve.
Privilege to serve, it's got to be privileged.
You have to be privileged in some aspects, so, but just to make everyone aware that it is, these are part-time roles that we do for this amount, and it is always about the public service, but it consumes a lot of the time, just regular time. So again, I'm on the record for saying I think all, all of the body needs increase, whether it's increased salary or benefits, but I won't call for a vote on that. So, Ms. Verchek, I think you have your direction forward.
Thank you.
Which is no direction, thank you. Yes.
Was that it had to be whether we, we could approve it even though we might not take it? Is that, the last time we voted, I believe, is that correct? It has to be in the docket prior to?
An increase would need to be in state code for it to even be budgeted.
Whether even?
In city code.
Yes.
Even if we don't even, even if we don't even take it? Is that, something about before the election, it has to be on the books or something? I remember that last conversation.
Yeah, I'd have to talk with the city attorney about taking it or not taking it.
So what, I think what he's referring to is if it was approved to be on there, it would need to be on the books at least four months before the election, which really, I think that's still another month, isn't it, since it's in May, but for some reason you had on here the end of this year. But if it's approved, just like what Councilmember Perrow said years ago, the amount was approved, but the, it was lowered via the budget. So the budget is what funds it. So that's the resolution.
Yes.
So, so the amount could be approved to be in there in the code, but not funded as, at a later date, if that's something.
That is correct.
Can I, can I make a motion?
Yes, Councilmember Wilder.
And I'm up for election in May, and I don't know if I'm running or not, so I'm thinking about further persons. I'll decide later what I'm going to do. I make a motion that we increase each person with mayor, as well as the city council members, by $4,000. Looking at Charlottesville, which is 8,000, 18,000, which is 8,000 more, I'm just taking half of that amount, even though we're twice the size of Charlottesville, I'm setting at 4,000 for city council members and 4,000 for the mayor as an increase, that's the motion.
Thank you. The motion has been made. Is there a second? Second? I'll second it, yep. Is there any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
All right.
Yeah, one thing is interesting. I do, I've been here for a long time, and when I do see what the mayor does, it is surprising. I mean, there's, we get lists every week, and Robin's been sending all these little events and whatnot. And I look at all these things that there are, obviously, you don't have to do them all, but they're, they're nice. I mean, people call, somebody called me the other day asking, you know, hopefully we can get a resolution for a person that is retiring in the city, that's meant a great deal, that's a resolution that's the mayor would do and proclaim and, you know, or proclamation, rather. There's all these events that I see. As a council member, you don't have to be at everything, but, you know, you showed up this morning at our finance committee, which you're not a member of, but you still show up, you show up at PDC. So the mayor, whoever that is, there's, there's a lot of things. And so it isn't about, and I realize people could, you know, take whatever side of the thing you want, you know, this obviously isn't about the money because it's, you're getting less than, you know, minimum wage. It's about the service, granted, with that, you know, the labor is worthy of his hire. And when we say public service, there are two, two sides. There's people behind this dais, there's people sitting in front of the dais. I mean, so, you know, I've seen some raises that have happened for people in front of the dais over the years that would make this look like a, you know, you know, so I, to try to pontificate and, you know, and act like it's, you know, falling on a sword or something, I don't think is wise, but, you know, for people that are coming before us, people that have come after us, we want people that are going to be willing to step up. Lots of people that I've talked to over the years, they said they can't run because they can't afford it. I mean, they lose business because they now have to abstain. They can't even vote on something, or they'd have to remove something from their, you know, their business that they couldn't help somebody because they're now in government. So, you know, with that, I think there's, there's definitely worthy measures of both. You know, having that in there doesn't mean that it's going to be funded. I mean, that's part of the city manager's budget proposal, if it can be funded, so just for what it's worth.
Councilmember Wilder, can you repeat the motion?
The motion was to increase the salaries of the mayor, as well as the city council members, by $4,000. This is half of what it is, half of what they receive in Charlottesville. So if we did, Charlottesville would be 8,000, so I just took half that amount and said I.
You said mayor and city council.
Yes, $4,000.
I didn't get that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The ordinance that would be before you. Present members of council shall be paid their current salary until the 1st of July 2020. Their after the salary of each member of council shall be $14,000 per annum, except that member who shall be elected mayor, whose salary shall be $16,000 per annum. shall be sixteen thousand dollars per annum, payable out of the treasury of the city and by weekly installments.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Councilmember Perro?
Well, I do appreciate the motion. I don't think I can support it. Uh, we'll be looking at a at a budget coming up. We're already talking about, uh, the constraints that we see in the budget. Uh, I'm sure there's gonna be pressure for a, you know, I'm sure there's gonna be pressure, and we probably need to have a pay increase. Um, for many of our, uh, many of our employees, I think that pay increase would be, uh, on a percentage basis, probably pretty, pretty small. I think it'd be, it's hard for me to justify a forty percent pay increase for council when when, you know, we're looking at something to miniscule in comparison for, uh, staff.
Guess what the reality of it is? Is that the total budget amount is twenty-eight thousand, if it's even adopted. So, I mean, twenty-eight thousand, um, you know, I think we we had, twenty-eight thousand goes out pretty quickly in, uh, lots of these budget items. So, you know, I recognize the percentage doesn't look good. You know, I think I've been here since two thousand and four. I think it's been about the same the entire time. That's sixteen years, which is is fine. I haven't complained about it, one iota. It is about making sure that we can, you know, looking forward. Um, so it, I don't think it's a, you know, I don't think it's a political point. I think it's, you know, I mean, it's, I'm fine with it and fine without, um, you know, thinking about a future for other council members, current council members. I think that's the issue.
And I will just add, to follow Councilmember Haggelson, again, th- those of us here have served our time. We've we've proven that we're hopefully public servants. I think it is, people want to see their leadership. They want to have access. They want to see them at events. It just shows the concern. It shows the listening ear. It shows the presence. And so I think people, the reality is that it takes a lot to be present to a city of eighty thousand people. And we're growing. And with the number of organizations that would like to see you there, that invite you to do keynote, to do welcoming proclamations, yes, the mayor does, um, a little bit more. Um, and that is why all of you are seeing more of the schedule, because I think it's important for you to know what the mayor's doing and where I'm going, or he or she is going. But also to realize, sometimes it's about sharing the wealth, so that if you all have time or availability, it's really open, uh, to a council member being able to go. But it is the reality of, we are a growing city. It takes more meetings. It takes more constituent involvement and engagement if you're doing it very well. We could all sit in our seats and not show up. I mean, that's something that we could just do to make it convenient for ourselves, but we don't. We we come as we can, and more so, we really plan into our schedules, uh, both our work and, uh, private lives, to make sure that we are available and accessible. And that's just as important. So, um, not, you know, the mayor role does one thing, and, um, vice mayor does it, too, because if if that role, I'm not available, I call the vice mayor, or I ask some of you, Robin, to say, can you come? But it is about the future leadership. It is about the city's growing, and it's about, we do no less work than that half of a city population like a Charlottesville. Or, you know, we're all doing the same amount of work. And I appreciate the vice mayor's conversation, um, but I just think that looking at broadening out the opportunities for others, and to really give the true picture of what we're doing and a sense of time and commitment and, uh, input and access, that it's important. Did I see anyone else's finger? Councilmember Nelson? Did you? Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Do you understand the motion?
Is there?
Oh, Councilmember Haggelson?
Just one thing, too. Um, Madam City Manager, the, you put on here four months before the election. Um, four months before the election, there would be, you know, the election is May, so four months before would be a meeting in January. But on here, it did say something about needing to have something by the by the end of this calendar year. Is that?
I'm not sure which day Election Day is in May.
May fifth.
And your council meeting isn't until the second Tuesday in January, so it would be?
Okay. So with, because it says in here, with municipal election on May fifth, council would need to take action, uh, on this proposal prior to January first. So if, is there a way to put this in, to have it, have it in there, but then it's obviously would be coming back from a budgetary standpoint? You know, so if it, if the, if it's approved up to that, obviously by by city code, um, but then not funded?
Right.
I mean, that can be the
You can do it for not, sign not to fund it.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, I think.
If council approves this resolution, I can tell you that I will put in the proposed budget, the increase, and then it will be up to you, once it comes to you, to make the change.
To take it out.
Or not.
Or if there is.
Compensation on annual basis.
But you can't. It's only, it can only be done every two years, I think, is the, it has to be done
Well, it's because you have an election.
Before an election.
An election every two years.
But it couldn't be done next year.
But we could all, every year, we could say, no, you know what? This is a twelve thousand year. This is a ten thousand year, whatever. I mean, we, if we want. That that that's our prerogative.
Right. You couldn't increase it above what you've adopted. You could decrease it.
Sure. But you couldn't go above that amount.
Correct.
It isn't voted.
No.
All right. Any further questions, clarifications, discussion? All right. Well, I will call for the vote on Councilmember Wilder's motion. And the motion passes four to three.
Okay. Just procedural question. So, we just approved a change in the code, but we didn't actually see the code language.
Yes, it is attached.
Is it, was it, was it in the resolution?
Mm-hmm.
Section fifteen point two.
Okay, so it was amended, it amended that?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Thanks.
Ten thousand changes to fourteen and twen- and twelve changes to sixteen. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Svercek. Next is roll call, and I'm not sure where I started last. I will start with Councilmember Nelson.
No items. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Perro?
I don't believe I have any items. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Haggelson.
Oh, oh, yes, I do.
Councilmember Perro.
And maybe you were gonna say this, but wasn't the Christmas parade fun?
Yep, very good.
And, uh, and, you know, I just thought that was a really good event. I really liked, uh, I I think the more it happens in in Midtown, the more I like it in Midtown. I think it's very accessible to a larger group of people. People don't have to travel downtown. I know we've got a lot of residents in downtown now. We used to not, and people had to drive in. But this actually goes through a residential area, and I just feel like it's much more accessible, uh, for a broader group of people. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
And I will echo on that, because I live not far from there. The funny thing is, I drove about a mile over, parked way in the back, walked about a mile up to the spot, and I could have walked from my house about a quarter of a mile. And so
Your wife, your wife misses it?
Yeah, yeah. And so with that, after I got there, it's like, why did I do that?
Yeah.
If now, if I only had one of those little scooters, I could have taken it across, and I could have been right there. No, it wasn't great. And I, and actually, I totally agree. I mean, that, uh, years ago, I used to be the president of the J.C.'s. We ran the Lynchburg Christmas Parade, which was downtown. We used to have to rope out the streets. We did this, that, the other. And this is so much better. People are sitting everywhere. They're dispersed throughout. There are people that live right there. They just come walking up. They got restaurants that are open. They can get coffee. You got food vendors, plenty of room, no construction. Um, it was great. Lots of people were there. I think it was fabulous. Uh, it was a great time. Um, there was something else I was gonna mention, but, uh, that skips my mind, so we'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Yeah, I've got a, just a, a couple. Um, wanted to congratulate LDA and all of their partner organizations for the Christmas tree lighting down at the, uh, the Craddock area, which was, uh, which was great. I didn't get to go, but here it was really wonderful. My family went. Um, uh, congratulate the city on the groundbreaking of the, you might have been planning to say this, the Langon Road Trestle Project, to extend the Blackwater Creek Trail, um, from, uh, the Ed Page entrance over to Lincoln. Really exciting, uh, project, really exciting. Um, and then, lastly, I had this, one of the best experiences the other week. I went over to the Diamond Hill, uh, Community Center and visited with their team there and and got to meet some of the folks in the neighborhood that they serve. And this is the the center that was most recently renovated. It really looks nice. They did a just a fantastic job.
They have great food.
And 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 I saw them, yes, they were baking as I was there, and it smelled really good. And, um, so I'm just really proud that this institution exists in our city, along with the other neighborhood centers. It was just really cool to be with them.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
Real quickly, I do wanna, um, again, congratulate Jane White. I'm always doing an awesome job in our community in recognizing the history of Lynchburg. Uh, I go to all the historical markers, and I'm always so amazed. I understand she's working on a book. And I'd just like to look at that book and see all the great markers that are in our community. On this past Saturday, Oakwood Country Club, they had one for, I think its name was Morris Alexander.
Yes.
Well, I think it was a cadet, I believe, at Oakwood Country Club, not just there, but also nationally known for what he did in, in the area of golf. So we commend Jane White and and recognize the the work of Morris Alexander. His family came from all over the United States for the celebration, and thank for the Oakwood Country Club for hosting that event, which is wonderful. And also, I wanna thank all the men that worked with the mustache for kids this year. They raised a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in one month for the kids in our community.
That's huge.
So we're so thankful to all the men that grew a mustache. Uh, maybe next year, we can get more council members to join me. But thank you to the others that did donate. Um, on a, on a, on a, on a second note, thank
You raised big money for that.
All of those that helped me that last week. You know, my sister passed the week before, so I didn't have a chance to do any fundraising. But that last week, I did a a hard push, and I had so many persons to donate to me, to my campaign, that I received a Moore and Giles bag for raising the most funds that last week. So, thankful to all those that donated to that process. Um, I've never been able to afford one on my salary. So I was so excited to get a, a more, that 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 bag was more than what I'm making a month. So thankful to all the others that donated for that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
No items. Thank you.
And Councilmember Haggelson, I'm gonna come back.
Sorry. I knew I had something that I wanted to mention. That Liberty University, the first year, being in the, uh, the Football Bowl Championship Series, has qualified for the Cure Bowl, which is fabulous. It's a buzz that's happening over at the school. Um, they got a, they're chartering a plane going down to Orlando right before Christmas, and, um, just what a, you know, lots of, it's ju- it's great for Lynchburg. I mean, because next year, as they move up the, they've moved up the division this year, be getting a lot more, uh, the competition. And a lot of this competition flies in. They charter aircraft, and they go on the opposite side, the FBO side of the, uh, airport. Um, and so, which is fabulous. And so congratulations to them.
That's awesome. Councilmember Perro?
I saw one, I saw this just now, as I was flipping through some city emails. Um, and, uh, I I'm just shocked by this and actually pretty thrilled. Uh, there's a notice post just posted while we're here by, by, uh, the city, uh, press staff, um, that says that Lynchburg ranks number fifty-five in the country for affordable homes. And the relevant data is, this is a Harvard study, the relevant data shows, the studies show that ninety-three point oh-two percent of Lynchburg homes were affordable to the average living, uh, average household living there. For the purposes of the study, homes were considered to be affordable if the required monthly mortgage payment was less than thirty-one percent of the median monthly household income for that area. Wow.
Cool.
Wow.
That's very different than the report that we got. So that's, that's
Wow. Yes.
It's the opposite.
All right. Thanks.
Wow. Thank you.
It's good news.
Thank you all for everything.
Yeah, very good.
It's good news. And thank you all for everything. Um, all of the events that we've attended, yes, the planners of the Christmas parade, I wanna thank them, um, all of the partners and the organizations that come out to make it so great. The biggest thing are the kids' faces. They're just excited to see you waving and and saying, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Um, and I do have several, uh, roll call items. First, on Thursday, December twelfth, from four thirty PM to seven thirty PM, the public is cordially invited to attend an open house for the development of the Darrington Neighborhood Plan. This kickoff event will take place at the Darrington Elementary School for Innovation at two-ten Smith Street. In the school's cafeteria, this is a collaborative effort between the City of Lynchburg and the residents of Darrington to help plan the neighborhood's future. So current and former neighborhood residents are encouraged to attend the open house and share informations, uh, let me say, share information. In addition, there will be an opportunity to visit information stations set up throughout the cafeteria with representatives from various community organizations to discuss available resources. Um, for the kiddies and families, complimentary pizza and other refreshments will be provided, and adults in attendance can register to lend gift cards to local establishments. There will also be kids' activities available during the open house. So that's a great, um, event this Thursday from four thirty to seven thirty at Darrington Elementary. Next, the Blue Ridge and James River Chapters of the Daughters of the American Revolution, in cooperation with the Old City Cemetery in Lynchburg, are proud to sponsor our twelfth anniversary wreaths across America ceremony on Saturday, December fourteenth, at twelve noon. This event is free and open to the public. Please arrive early, as parking within the cemetery is very limited, and the cemetery gates close at eleven forty-five AM. So all council members are invited to that as well. And, uh, it's really a great event. Um, they do every year, so it's really very festive. In preparation of its twenty-twenty-twenty-four Consolidated Plan, Twenty-Twenty Annual Action Plan, and the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, the City of Lynchburg is seeking community input. Two public meetings are scheduled on Tuesday, December seventeenth, and Wednesday, December eighteenth, six PM to seven PM each evening. Both meetings will be held at the Miller Center, three-oh-one Grove Street, room two-oh-five. This facility is handicapped, accessible with free parking. So, thank you. And that's all of the roll call items that I have at the moment. Next is consideration of a closed meeting to discuss appointments to the Building Code Appeals Board, Community Development Advisory Committee, Horizon Behavioral Health Board, Lynchburg Community Action Board, Lynchburg Regional Airport Commission, Planning Commission, Transit Company Board of Directors, and Youth Services Citizens Board. May I have a motion to go into a closed meeting?
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Wilder, and a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Dolan. We are now in recess.
No, I'm not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's vote. I'm trying to rush this through.
Word recess?
No, no.
Recess, you said. I'm for recess.
Let's vote it out. Okay, thank you. And is it because we didn't go to recess?
I wanted recess.
Yeah. And the motion passes six to one. Thank you very much. We are now in closed session.